Okay, I've got 201, so let's call this meeting the order.
Well, we need Carl Sender.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, is he supposed to come at two?
Yes.
Okay. Not seeing him on there.
I don't know that I have his, ah, let me think.
I think I may have a number.
Okay, hold on. No, I probably have it in my emails.
I think I've got him on, on here. Yep, I got him. I'll try the work number. Hey Carl, are you gonna join us on this meeting?
I am.
Okay.
Who had the link to join? Did you send it out?
Uh, I think it, oh, you know what, it's on the website. I don't know if it got sent to you.
Ask him to go to the website instead.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, see you later. Okay, bye bye. He was wondering where the link was, so I guess maybe we didn't send him a special link. We probably should have done that.
Hey Bob, I'm trying to get in on the computer, see if you can let me in and then I'll shut the phone off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, I'm not looking, not paying attention. Alright, that should do it.
Recording.
Here comes Carl. Hey Carl, can you hear us? You're muted, Carl.
There, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Alright.
Yep, got you now.
Good to see all of you.
Great, okay. So this is a joint meeting of the town council and the HR committee. And I think we basically wanted to get more details, particularly of the costs of the proposals in terms of employee benefits and salary.
Sure. Okay. Do you all have a spreadsheet that is the analysis of the PTO versus vacation sick leave?
You've put it up Carl, so we can see exactly which one, because I've got more papers about this than
Okay.
Carter says pills.
Let's see if I can do this here, okay. Alright, is everyone able to see the sheet?
No.
No? What am I doing wrong? Let's see, maybe.
When did that come out? I don't, I don't see it in my stuff. If I had it, I could share for you, but.
Alright, hold on. You know, can I just email it to everyone?
Sure.
That work, sure.
Let me, hold on, let me go back to the, why is it not sharing? Okay, here we go, share. Sharing. Now, do you see it?
No.
No?
Well, you've got your screen up Carl, but you're showing your Zoom meeting opening. There's a bunch of tabs open, just hit the right tab and it'll share what you want. All the tabs across the top of your screen, just grab the right one. Your screen sharing, but you're just not there yet with the right screen.
I gotta get to the Excel file, okay. Is that it?
There you go.
Yep.
Okay, alright, thank you John. Not often do I have to share, so. Okay, so the top part lists the employees, hire date, years of service, vacation days, sick days, position, base wages, cost of one day, total cost. So it looks like if we total out, or based on what they're eligible for vacation and sick days, which I think is now going to be proposed as the PTO days, looks like it's about seventy, almost seventy-three thousand dollars. Now, if we look at 21, it looks like the cost, if we compared it to 2021, is about sixty-eight thousand five oh five. But then there's also some of the unused sick leave under the old policy. And it looks like that would total out to about nine thousand one seventy-seven. So I think, you know, your difference, looks like the net increase from 21 to 22, you're talking, you know, just under five thousand dollars. Plus, I guess we gotta figure out the unused sick leave, I guess that needs to be paid out?
Right. Under the new policy, that basically gets converted to PTO days, so yeah, I think we would pay that all out.
Right. And then there was an analysis here for 2020, so. So it's not a lot different from 20 to 21, but you still have some unused sick leave that's still remaining from 20 and 21.
So the new policy Carl would pay out, with the town would have to pay out an extra five plus the nine, right?
I believe so.
Okay.
Now, what about the 20? What I was unclear of is the, this cost from 2020, does that expire?
The cost, the cost of the unused sick leave?
Yeah. We already, we already dealt with that, we split it and gave it to them.
Okay, okay.
We gave them fifty percent.
Okay, got it. So yeah, so you'd still have to deal with the nine thousand. And then for 22, if you go to this policy. Can I just share with you what I've done for my company? I think at the beginning, when I started the firm, I decided, or maybe it was, maybe a couple of years into it, it just became too much of a hassle to say, well, how much, you know, when is someone sick and when is it they want to take off? And I really liked the idea, seeing other firms, especially professional service firms, but I think it's been widely used in a lot of businesses, say, you get so many PTO days in a given year, whether you're sick or you're taking vacation. And I can tell you that for my employees, it's worked pretty well. I think I basically gave them an extra week of PTO that would uncover personal days, sick days, or whatever. And I typically have done, so if you have unused PTO at the end of the year, I allow them to carry it over to the following September. So if by the following September, you don't use at least that carryover, you will lose it. And some have lost it, just because they've lost track of it. I typically lose it, okay? But I'm different, I'm the owner of the company. So that's my own fault, right? But I think it works pretty well, and then people don't have to necessarily, now, obviously, you know, if a patrolman is sick, obviously they're gonna need to let the chief know, or their supervisor know that, hey, I can't come in, someone's got to cover for me. You know, there's still gotta be communication, but it's, you kinda clear up, you know, people know, understand, employees understand how much PTO they have, and they can use it accordingly. So I like it, and so when I heard about you guys considering this, I thought, well, there's some merit to that. Then you, you don't have to, people don't have to feel like, okay, I really wanna do something as a personal day, and then trying to decide is it vacation, sick day, or whatever, you know, it just eliminates all of that. So that's my observation, and I don't know what you guys' thoughts are, but for my employees, it works very well.
So Carl, when you made that transition, and you had employees with vacation days and sick days, did you just add up the total number of vacation plus sick days and call them PTO days?
So you know, now that you're mentioning that Bob, I think, because when I came from my previous firm, they kind of implemented PTO, and I don't remember how they did it, so I did, I think now, I'm retracting. I think I just started out with PTO, so I didn't have to worry about it.
Okay.
I think that's kind of something that the council will have to decide, you know, do you, how, what's, you know, do you take whatever vacation days, plus if the standard is six, six, six days, you make that total PTO. So you gotta decide, what's the total PTO for different years of service? And then you just go with it. That's, that would be my suggestion. So if vacation days typically is thirty for someone in so many years of service, or whatever, and you typically have been offering six sick days, then maybe you say, alright, it's a total of thirty-six. But that, that's something you guys can consider. I mean, does that make sense?
Yes. The other thing Carl, we should point out, it does look like we had some increases, but remember, as people move up and have more years of service and they get an increase, that increased the cost of the sick leave and the vacation, so.
Sure.
So just as a point, and then we did have some improvements in wages, so that changes the figure from year to year.
Right, yeah, that's a good point Mary Lou, because, and I think I saw somewhere you had a schedule in your, was it an employee handbook as to how many, how you earn your days, I see it, yeah.
Yes, and we're in the process of updating that, so that the employees have that to look at.
Yeah, the simpler, I think it's, it's better. I like that you have however many years of service, you're entitled to so many. So, yeah, this, I see, okay, this is a draft from November 4th of 2021. This makes a lot of sense to me, so.
Dr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Just wanted to let everybody know that out of our eleven town employees as of today, we have two town employees that have completely exhausted their sick days for the year. They've gone through six sick days already this year, so. It just shows that obviously, you know, there is a need for sick days and that, because we have two employees that have exhausted their days thus far, so, you know, in the new year. Just for FYI.
And you know, something that I didn't think about till now is COVID has kinda complicated things a little bit too.
Right.
You know, so if you are out for a week, what if you're in the hospital for extended time now? Does that then put you on like disability? I'm not sure. I didn't really get that far in your policy as to what would happen then.
Yeah, we have a COVID policy, but I have to admit, I don't have it on the tip of my tongue.
Well Bob, I think that was only during the first year, which was two years ago, that we had to do things different. But I would have to check in on what the waiting period is for short-term disability. I'm sorry that I didn't think about that, or I would have brought that with me today, but, you know, we have some employees, as you can see, that kinda save it like a bank, or that's what I'm gonna call it, like a cushion, in case they get sick, or their family gets sick, or something comes up. And then others, through no fault of their own, especially two employees who were only on the last day of January, so I'm sure that wasn't planned. And I'm sorry to hear that, but, so those would be two employees that wouldn't be carrying over. The other thing is, under the old policy, and I want Mark to speak to this, or make sure that I'm saying it right, under the old policy, that employee could carry over, if you were a regular, I'm gonna call a regular full-time forty hours, but you would forfeit at the end of December, if you were police, sixty hours of vacation in case you didn't get to use it all. Under this new PTO plan, it's the same number of hours, and it's the same procedure that you would forfeit it if you didn't take it before December 31st, if it's the prior years.
Yeah, Mary Lou, that's correct, and I'm looking at the town handbook currently. It allows for an employee to carry over, I believe it's five days.
So that'd be forty for like a regu, I'm gonna call them regular, and I'm not saying the police are irregular, but they're twelve-hour employees. So, a day, so they would be sixty, so that would be their five days, and a regular employee tentatively is eight hours, so that's forty hours, so that part is consistent, there's no change in that. And I'm sure we're gonna have some people that forfeit it because they just couldn't fit it in.
I'm sorry, Mary Lou, it's forty-eight hours for police officers to carry over currently.
Oh, okay, well, in the PTO policy that we worked on, it's sixty.
Yes, that's correct. On page thirty, page thirty-four in the current town handbook allows for an eight-hour employee to carry over forty hours of vacation time, and forty-eight hours for a police officer. That's in the current handbook.
Thanks, Mark. So the difference would be in the PTO, it's forty and sixty, because we looked at days, which would be five for each of them.
In my particular circumstance, I have not put a limit on how many hours or days they can carry over. It's just, they have to use it by the following September. And I've done that just because we're a smaller firm, and if, you know, we have heavy work assignments, sometimes, you know, you're not able to get it within a year, and so I wanted to be kinda generous in figuring, I gave them nine months. You're actually giving them a full twelve months to use it. So to me, that makes sense, I think that's even as fair as well. And, you know, your limits on hours don't seem unreasonable to me either, so.
Carl, how many employees do you have at your firm?
So there's seven of us.
Okay.
We're a small firm.
Well, we really are too. I mean, the police make up almost half of our group. If you consider the other group is, you know, we're not a big group either. And there have been, if we get an audit or FOIA request, where they're not able to take all their time.
Right. Yeah, things, things happen.
And so if an employee retires, and they have carryover hours, then the town, at the time they retire, has to reimburse them for those hours, right?
Right, because that's their, that's, when you, I'm sure, when you left the sisters, that they paid you out your vacation, right?
No, I didn't have that kind of a deal.
Oh, okay.
So that would be a liability the town would really need to keep track of.
Yes.
Well, and they have, and the town has that same liability right now. So that hasn't changed.
Yeah, not for vacation days, just sick, just vacation, not, not sick days, just vacation days, right?
Correct, correct.
So we're proposing that you get your allotment of PTO hours during this year, let's say 2022, but you're allowed to carry over what the carryover policy states into 2023, but you don't get to bank them for future years beyond that next year, right?
Correct. We took the banking part out of there.
Okay. Any other questions? I think this is basically for Carl, right? Because this is, this is sort of the Carl portion of the meeting?
This is the Carl portion, he's got on, he's got his blessing robe on, so he can bless it, so that when we have the council meeting, we can vote on it. So Carl, did you bless it?
I have, and you know, I think having this policy maybe clears up some things, and maybe makes you a little more attractive for retaining and hiring people, knowing you have some flexibility in this pool, you know, called PTO. So that would be my thoughts.
Cool. Anybody with any other questions for Carl? Uh, Mary Lou, do we need Carl for anything else then, or can we let Carl go back to work?
We do need Carl, because the next subject were the cost of the street and water.
Okay.
For their improvements, we do need him.
Okay.
I had a question, I was, I was muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Carl, this is on the subject, but off the subject. You know, in, in the, in the years past, I did a little research with the, with Michigan City, and they, you know, they handled COVID differently when it was rampant with the Delta. Is it possible, this is something we don't have in the policy, is it possible to use the ARP money for, if we were to decide that we could provide some, some relief for employees who are really COVID-stricken for, with the, with the, with the ARP money? Or is that not, is that not possible?
Well, in light that the US Treasury came out with their final ruling, so basically communities that received less than ten million dollars, I believe, you can use the full amount of your ARP funds as a revenue loss line item. So that means you can basically spend it for any legal purpose, except for you can't pay it, I don't, I think you're not allowed to make debt payments, or reimburse funds, that kinda thing. But there's ways we could get around that if we needed to, but, so, short answer Bill is yes. You could, you could do that, and that might be something that, you know, as the chief was saying, you know, whether his staff had, or, you know, patrolmen had COVID or not, but that could be a way to address if this COVID thing's gonna linger on, and it does keep the people out, you know, for extended period of time.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
So I guess we're ready now to move on to the street and water department salaries?
Bob, can I make one comment on the?
Sure, go ahead. We're a small group.
I, I think my suggestion will be, if you're not already doing, that handbooks, last page of handbooks should have acknowledgement that each employee received the handbook, and keep it in your record, because sometime happened, people, when they are leaving, or something goes wrong, they clearly state that, oh, I have never seen this handbook, I don't really know what they're talking about.
So far, we are, our HR committee meeting's Thursday, and we're in the process of updating the handbook, and we will make sure that happens and put one, even if they don't agree with it, they have to sign that they received it, and we will make sure that goes in everyone's file. Mark and I are working on it.
Okay, great, yeah, just acknowledgement they received this copy and the date they signed, because that's you in future for any kind of problems. And by the way, we have go also, we let people take their PTO up to next year, up to May, end of May, and that really makes, made a lot of difference for people to stay around. But we wanna make sure their schedules, they are ahead of time, not all of them take, trying to take it in the same time. So that, that will be the one thing, will be requesting their schedule at least thirty days ahead, planned vacation, not unplanned, something happened, a planned vacation should be requested within a, you know, thirty days period. So that will be two, my suggestion will be. Thank you.
And what, yeah, this to anybody, but what would be the advantage to the town to limit them to say the end of May, or the end of September, in terms of using last year's PTO days? What, what's the advantage of doing that?
I think the advantage is that it's a shorter period, because otherwise, people are accumulating for that, but specific year also. Now they will be accumulating for twenty-two, too. Also, they have accumulated for last year, so now, suddenly, you have very small organization, and suddenly one person leaving for thirty-four weeks away. Saying, I got my those last years, and plus I have this year, I'm gonna combine, and I'll be leaving, I won't be here a whole month.
Okay, well, what do you, what's the pleasure of the town council? Should, should we, should we limit that?
I think we should leave it to December 31st, that's what they're used to. We don't have people that, we have very considered employees, and unless they had something catastrophic, they're not gonna be gone a month.
Okay.
Doc, I would add on our behalf that, you know, the first quarter and probably the last quarter of the year, the more, an easier time for us to let people off, rather than the second and third quarter, that's when we're a lot busier in town, so, just for me, it'd be nice to have the flexibility to use the fourth quarter to let people off, when things are a little bit slower because of the weather.
Okay.
So Bob, since this is an executive meeting, can I assume that the PTO policy looks okay from the council? So we can get it ready?
I'm good with it, we, we could, we could actually, is this an exec meeting? I guess it is.
No, it's not, because the public's here.
Yeah, no, I don't think it is exec. I don't, I don't think I called it an exec meeting. Yeah, in fact, we've got a lot of people who aren't down to council, but there's no reason we can't, well, this is a, this is a joint meeting of the council and the, actually, it's no, council and the HR committee. There's no reason, I don't think, why we couldn't finalize, do a final vote on this, and could take this off our docket for the next town council meeting, so. I, I would make a motion to approve the PTO policy as we have discussed.
I second that.
Alright, Mary Lou?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
I'm good. John Coker?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
Alright, let's put that one to bed. Now we're ready for the salaries for the street and water departments.
Correct. So Carl was going to look this over and tell us the actual cost. If you'll remember, in December, effective January 1st, and I, I like not to use names, even though most of us know who it is, only because we don't need to do that, so we said, the, just a minute, the street superintendent, the street department laborer, the water superintendent, and the water department laborer. Now, effective January 1st, because we wanted to wait and get the total cost, we gave them three percent. Uh, when the HR committee met, we were looking at bringing, the water department laborer is being brought in to be the assistant water department manager. He's passed all of his exams and certifications, and we were looking to take him to twenty-one dollars an hour. No, wait a minute, I'm sorry, hold on, twenty-three dollars an hour. So, just, let me do the math, so we gave him three percent, this would be an additional fifteen point six eight percent. The street department laborer, we gave him the three percent, we were looking, only because he's a ten-year employee, if he went, and I'm gonna use this, Mark's on there and he'll back, if he went to Michigan City, he could get, even without certifications, he'd start out as twenty-three dollars an hour. So we were looking to take him to twenty-one dollars an hour, so that would be an additional six point three two percent. The water superintendent and the street superintendent, when we did the survey two years ago, the water superintendent, which we neglected, even though we're not as big at department, our water guy still has to have the same certifications as a big group. He also is a working supervisor, so he's out there every day. So we looked at some improvements for him, but because the street department person has also been a number of years, we, we wanted to have some equity there, so we were taking both of them to thirty-one dollars an hour. So for the street guy, he'd get an additional point six one percent, and the water superintendent would get an additional three points five seven, so they would both be making the same amount.
I'm sorry, give me that again. The water superintendent was what percentage?
His would be an additional three point five seven.
Mm-hmm, and the street?
Street would be an additional point six one for the superintendent.
That's in addition to the three?
Three percent, yes. All I did was take, I'm just working off at my spreadsheet, and I'm just backing out three percent.
And the dollar an hour figure for the street laborer was what?
This dollar an hour for the street laborer, he would go to twenty-one dollars an hour.
And the water department?
The water would go to twenty-three.
Okay. And, so Carl, you figured out the costs of making those changes? You're muted, Carl.
He's, he's still muted, Bob.
Still muted, Carl.
There we go, sorry.
You can't read words yet.
Yeah, sorry about that. So if I'm understanding, I believe you're saying these were going up to like, from what the current was, to twenty-three dollars for the, right, okay.
Right.
I believe that increase totals like eight thousand nine, whoops, no. I believe the total for those was like nine, nineteen thousand five sixty-seven.
I believe the total for those was like 19,567 from what they currently were. Does that sound right, Mary Lou?
No, that I, no, that sounds kind of right, let me.
Are we, are you comparing to what was in addition to what was already approved for this year? See, that's where I'm kind of.
Okay, here, if we had left it the way we recommended it. Let me go, let me tell you that. So the street superintendent, if we had given him 3.61, his adjustment base pay would have been 2327, okay? And if we had given the street department laborer the 9.32 at the, on January. So if we had given him on January 1, it would have been 4,070. If we had given the water superintendent on January 1 the 6.57, it would have been 4234. That's a yearly thing. And the water department laborer, if we had given him the 18.68, that would have been an additional 8936. So even if I that would have been 18,000, but we already gave him 3%, which I'd need to back out.
Okay, that's one I was confused on.
Okay, so it's probably. I just need to figure up that additional amount, and I didn't do that. I'm sorry, I didn't do that part. But the original part was what I named off those numbers, which is 9, 13, 17, 19, 5. So Carl, an easy way, wouldn't it be just to take those total numbers I gave you and take it times 0.61? The other one times, right?
6.32, yeah.
Yeah, and the next one times 3.57, and the last one times 15.68, and I'd get, you want me to do that real quick?
I'm doing it right now.
Okay.
Mary Lou, all these numbers are the same as on your spreadsheet that you proposed earlier, right?
Yes, yes, they are.
If we're looking at that spreadsheet, then the percentage increase column is what you're still proposing. Nothing's changed.
Yes. Thank you, John. I'm sorry.
Get a handle on what. Yeah, okay.
Okay, he's working on it. I mean, I could, I told him I'd do it the same thing. Okay.
Well, roughly, we're talking about whatever, if it's 18 or 19, that's all the overall increase for everybody based on your old spreadsheet, I think, right, Mary Lou?
Right.
Oh, so this new increase is about 14,730 is the net increase, less the 3%. So if the total was like 19, the 3% should have been. Oh, yeah, we said the total is 19,568. It's now less the 3% means that you to catch up is like 14,730 for those four employees.
Okay.
And that's 14,730 per year, just to summarize, for this increase over and above the 3% that we already agreed to.
Correct. And then if you want to take into account perf and FICA, I think Bill normally adds another 20% onto that. Is that right, Bill?
That's right. 0.1885, but let's say.
Okay, all right, I use 20%, so you know, it's about 17,6 a year. Maybe a little less.
Okay. And so.
17,5 a year, 17,500 a year with. I'm sorry, Mary Lou, I didn't have that done ahead of time, so.
I'm sorry, Carl, if I'd known, I could have separated that out because it's just a, it's just a formula. I could just put in another column for you.
I I totally forgot that. I knew you were factoring in the, doing the 3% for everyone, but for some reason, I thought this decision was already made too, and now I'm remembering it wasn't, so thank you.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
Well, I was just gonna say, just to summarize, if we go up to 30,000 feet and try to get out of the weeds for a couple minutes. The the new raises, in addition to the 3%, is roughly 20, plus you get another 4,000 or whatever it is for the Bennys and or insurances and taxes. So we're talking about $25,000 roughly on raises if we if we approve Mary Lou's proposed rates. So talking.
I I don't get those numbers, John. So I get more like, I get more like the 17,000 that.
Well, it depends on what, yeah, whichever way you approach it, but if you if you look at the overall. I think what we're saying is it's it's roughly 20 plus the 20%, right, Bill?
Well, I'm saying, well, I'm saying, I guess I started with, I was just taking the 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 numbers. You know, like, for example, the the street employee would be just a $1.21 more than what he's making, so $1.21 times 2,080 is, you know, is a little you know, is $2,200 plus 20%. So I I don't think it's, you know, if you're if you're counting the 3%, then yes, we can add to that, but I I think if you did the math, it would, it would work out. The street superintendent would probably only be making about another $400 or $500.
That's what I'm thinking, Bill, but I.
So so I, you know, because I'm I'm just using incremental, I just went into the, I just went into the the pay. Street labor making 1979, $21 is $1.21.
But but at some point, though, if we aggregate it all, it's somewhere between Carl's, you you guys are saying that we already did the 3%, and that's fine.
Yeah.
I guess I'm just trying to say, if we're looking at this salary ordinance as year over year, it's about 20 plus 20% is all I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
It's still, you know, whichever way you, I I agree with you, Bill, whichever way you approach the math. I'm just trying to get it, again, at the 30,000 foot view.
Yeah.
Is what what the way I think. We're talking about 20 plus plus 20%. So you're somewhere around less than 25 grand, you're 24 grand or whatever it is. For the overall raises proposed on Mary Lou's spreadsheet for everybody.
Okay.
So you know, it's not a huge number. I mean, it's it's a number we can probably live with. I'm not trying to make any, my motive isn't to question it. I'm just trying to make sure we're all on the same page when we talk about how much we're increasing things in in total. And then we're, you know, we're, we did that little holiday slam where we gave them some holiday money. And we're allowing some sellback now if we if we adopt that policy, so and and we also gave them the sick days back. So in general, it's been a pretty, I would say it's been a pretty positive good year for the employees in my mind, if assuming we adopt all this. In terms of where we sit right now with the rates, you know, we we talked about the 3% back in August or whenever it was. And Mary Lou came with the new chart with some, you know, some new raises for those four individuals. As I see it now, we have, we have made all the adjustments we need to make on outliers. And the water superintendent assistant, which I've been, you know, better informed now since we met last that there were some caveats on his employment contract when he was hired that stated that he would be an assistant within so many years, and and Mary Lou and the water board, you know, gave those indications to him when he was hired on, so I better understand where he sits. So if we're approving all of this, then, you know, we're in the neighborhood 25 for total. But we now, if if I understand this correctly, we've now made all the adjustments we promised everybody to make in terms of outliers, so the outliers are where they need to be relative to the salary ordinance. And we've made the adjustment to us, to the water assistant. And we've now equa- made equivalent the street superintendent and the water superintendent. Whether anybody disagrees with any of that, last philosophically, we're we're pretty much done with all the adjustments we said we'd make outside of the annual nominal percentage increase for everybody. So philosophically, again, when we sat down early in the year, we said we wanted to be, you know, equitable and look at the salary, you know, we spent a lot of money on that study, and we we wanted to equate some of these numbers, which we've done now, in my estimation. There will be no more outlier adjustments, and we've got the street and water guys adjusted to where we think that's equitable. So in future years, then, looking forward, we will have this nominal increase, unless we see some new development, we'll have some nominal increase for the salary ordinance for 2023. Is that the way everybody sees it?
We, and John, in our, one of the things on our agenda for Thursday is we want to get a new survey. We're not gonna do the same, spend the same kind of money. We think we can, Mark and I've talked about it. We think we can come up with a survey that will be just as good. That survey's two years old. So yes, you're correct. The only, and I hate to bring this up since this is going so well, and who knows, I might sleep good tonight. Is that even though we brought the outliers up to where they should have been two years ago, we really didn't give them a 3% increase this year. Just, I'm putting that out there just so everybody knows. So even though we brought them up to where the survey was two years ago, they really didn't get the even though it looks like they got a huge amount, they did not get the 3% in there.
I'm sorry, say that again, Mary Lou, I don't know, who didn't?
Okay, we brought, we had a survey, and last year, we said, we only, we didn't want to give them the whole amount of where they should be on the survey. And we said we would do that in, we would do it last year and this year. So we did bring them up to where the survey said, but we did not give them the 3% increase that all employees got, so I just I'm just putting that out there. This is going real well. I don't want to be a stickler about it, but I'm just telling you that we didn't do that. I don't know where the survey's gonna lead us this year. If you look at inflation and all the other things that are going on. But I'm more than happy to agree with John and say, you know, for now, I think this is good. I just wanted to put it out there about the 3% for the four outliers.
But but Mary Lou, if we look at your percentage increase column, though, and and if the the ones that I consider to be the outliers, for instance, the administrative assistant, police dispatcher, the administrative assistant, deputy clerk.
Right.
The water department assistant office manager and the police dispatcher part-time. Those rates are considerably larger than 3%, so I guess I'm a little confused about your point of view on the 3%, but I don't want to argue it with you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, it's going so well, but Mark, I think you're on here, and maybe you could speak to that, and I know that, I think Mark's on here.
No, Mary, yeah, Mary Lou, and John, John's correct. When you look at like the secretarial staff and that, and I compare to an email that I got earlier today, looking at one of the larger municipalities in La Porte County, we're in line with those salaries and that, so I feel very comfortable where we're at with the raises that we've given in the last two years.
So I don't think the point of the debate, Mary Lou, I'm not, I I'm not trying to disagree with you. I I don't think the same way you do about it. When I see somebody getting, you know, 13% and 9%, 8%, I I look at that as, okay, that's an override over the 3%, and it is included, but we don't need to belabor that.
Okay.
I think we can agree on these rates if that's where we want to go. I just want to make a couple of quick points if nobody else has anything. You know, one of the reasons we set down to try or set out to try to make this policy consistent so that we could you know, get a salary ordinance passed every year with, without waiting until the end of the year and that sort of thing, was we had this general business philosophy of, we want to be above average, which I think we've accomplished. And then we wanted to be consistent. And I know in prior years, there were some animo- not animosity, that's probably too strong a word, but there were some sore feelings about one group of people in the town got a nominal raise that was half of what the other people got. So if we're, that's why I kind of, I want to make sure we're, we all understand where we are right now. We've made the adjustments that we needed to make, I believe, in the outliers. We've made some adjustments, you know, based on your proposal, Mary Lou, on the public works guys. So in my mind, we've made all the necessary oddball adjustments, so that next year, we're gonna be looking at a nominal jump for everybody without having to go through this agony of analyzing each position again, I believe. Unless you find something in a survey that, you know, that looks dramatically out of whack.
Yeah, and I'm all for the no agony.
Okay. Now, the only point I would make is, you know, the part of the problem with what we're doing today, if we approve all this, you still have quite a difference between people that were not outliers, for instance, the public works guys, and what we're giving the police, for instance, in terms of raise. As long as they don't have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with that. So if Mark says the police don't have their nose out of joint because they're getting three, and the public works guys are getting some multiple thereof, then then we're okay.
And John, I've I've gotten feedback from them, and everybody's okay with it on both sides of the coin. So there's no animosity anywhere.
Because there was, you know, the last time we had disparate rates of increase, there was some animosity. So long as we're we're all on the same page, we know where we are, what we're doing, I'm happy. I I think I can support what we're talking about here.
John, yeah, John and Mary Lou, if I could just add one thing, I think we're, we do have a timing phenomenon that occurs relative to the budgeting process, and we come up with, you know, for example, salary increases and we insert 3% for example. The HR then makes determinations about increases after that cutoff date, which we have to submit based on state requirements. So I think I think we have to be intellectually honest with ourselves and say we have a little bit of a timing difference in terms of how we discuss these things. And I think HR needs to be more in the budgeting process discussions relative to the timing of that so that we're all on the same page. I agree with everything that's been said. You know, whatever market increases are, we've been in the 3% world now for a very long time. Eventually, rates are gonna go up based on market pressures and other kinds of things. But I think we need to be more in line between the budget and finance group and the HR committee in terms of the financials when we approve things. Because as it turned out this year, you know, the recommendations from HR were coming in after the budget was assembled, and the budget is assembled really earlier than in most worlds I've worked in. I think it's like a July timeframe or a June timeframe when we actually finalize those things. We just, we gotta make, we gotta make sure that we're all talking to each other at the same time.
Mike, I, listen, I, this is the first year Mark and I really kind of will be co-chairing this, and we and I talked, well, we talked about it. Once we got this off our plate, we said, okay, now here's where we're going. I'm ready to, because I need approval from the council to get a price from the HR consultant that's been helping us with job descriptions and so forth to do a survey, and I think realistically, I think we could be ready by May. And I, and I'd be happy to say that. I I'm pretty sure, actually, I like to give you a date, and I'll try to come in ahead of that time.
The advantage of of doing it in May, if you can meet that timeframe, and Bill, I'll defer to you, what's our, what's our cutoff we're having your budget done?
It really is what what you've said, Mike, it's it's, I mean, we don't approve it until November, but we really have to have a hearing before that, and and, you know, we we try to finish by July, so you're right. I mean, it is wackier than any business that I've ever been in because of the, this, you know, the municipality-ness of it that we have to, that we have to get it done. So I just, I mean, I suppose we can leak into August, but we really should have our numbers together then, so that's right. It does, it does conflict with with any.
I truly think I can be ready. I'm serious. The other thing is, I will bring to the council meeting in February, I'll get an a proposal on how much the survey will cost, and I will, I don't think it's gonna be that expensive. And I will let everybody know, and I think, I think we can have it early on, and then Mark and I can go over it and look at it and make some recommendations.
Then I think, I think that agenda item, John, I, this is just a suggestion, because I'm not on the committee, but maybe by the June budget finance committee, we have an agenda item on there for annual increases going into 2023, and that discussion starts then rather than the second half of the year. That makes sense.
I think that's a great idea, and I think we've, you know, we've tried to kind of tried to professionalize how we look at HR and the compensation, and I think, you know, we've moved, we've moved the the ball forward quite a bit this year. And I agree, I think, you know, I don't anticipate huge jumps or huge disparities like we uncovered with that first salary survey, so I'm assuming we'll be, you know, back to some sort of a nominal thing that we can live with. But I agree, we need to be intelligent about it with the budget and finance so that we.
I think that's fair. I think, I think we could, unless something happens, I think we can make that deadline.
I'm only gonna bring one quick thing to your attention, if I may. I might propose that. I might propose that our longevity, when I look at the two superintendents, the street superintendent, water department, they're, we're trying to meld that group together and, and help each other better than we have in the years past, and I think that's working well. I might propose that we increase the relative, the marginal longevity bonus based on how long somebody's been here. By that, I mean, a bracketed schedule. Right now, we're paying $100 a year for anybody, depending on how long they've been here for longevity.
Yeah.
If, if we said from 1 to 10, you got $100 a year, from three, I'm sorry, from 11 to 20 years, you got $200 a year, and from 21 years to 30 years, you got $300 a year, that would just drop a little more money into the longer-term employees' pockets, and I think that might be something to consider. We don't necessarily have to do it this year, but when I see us jumping the water superintendent up 6.6%, and the street superintendent at 3.6%, that's a, you know, again, as Bill is often reminding us, those aren't huge dollars, but I think it's an indication that maybe there'd be a better, you know, Tom, or rather, the street superintendent has been here 10 more years than the water superintendent, for instance, and he gets, you know, by virtue of being here that 10 years, he gets that 100 every year. But I would suggest that we could maybe ease the pain of this jump, the differential that we're bringing the water superintendent up this year versus the street superintendent, by adjusting the longevity such as I've described.
Why don't you let, I think about this, let me, let Mark and I put that on the survey, to see what other people do. And I think, I mean, we don't have to do what they do, but it would at least give us an idea of how to reward people and retain them.
I think that's fair, Mary Lou, if you can do that. I just think it's a way to, you know, throw a little bone to somebody that's coming up.
And I'll bring it up at the HR committee meeting, I'm working on my agenda right now. The only, okay, so, do you need a motion, Bob, to approve these street and water?
Yeah, I'm thinking, given, given the fact that you and John are getting along so well, somebody should make a motion.
I love it, I make the motion.
And Josh should second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There we go. All right. Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Wong?
Aye.
John Coker? You're muted, John.
Oh, he says aye.
I'm an aye. All right. Anything else we have to talk about?
I have something, because I needed approval before I can, and I told I'd have to wait till the town council meeting, but we're working on trying to hire a building commission part-time secretary. And Pam, Pam is the HR consultant, she's been working with Larry, she told me she sent the job description to Larry. Her email doesn't always work, so I haven't heard from her lately, but I know she's been in contact with Joe. So, do I have permission for her to advertise for it? Well, first of all, I guess the HR committee's going to have to figure out what we're going to pay him. We'll do that on Thursday. And then, do I have permission after that to have her advertise maybe in the Beecher, as soon as, and then we can put it, we will put it on the website, too.
I'm okay with that. I think we ought to be moving forward with that.
Okay, that's, I don't really want to wait for it. I've got people looking for somebody, and I wish I think it would be a big help. So we're, we are moving forward on that.
Just to be on, on cue with Robert's rules, Lord, I guess I'll make that as a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Wong?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
I'm an aye, okay.
Yeah, I, I...
Anything else we need?
Yeah, one, one more thing. We, we did not, you know, right now, we're working on a, on a wonderful, we, we all agreed on the salary ordinance that's, that's currently printed, hasn't been signed by everybody, but everybody has seen the copy with the 3%. I can make those changes. Are they retroactive, or do they start on February, whatever? So, I mean, that's...
I think it's retroactive. Everything we've ever done has always been retroactive.
Okay, that's fine, then, 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 then I'm, I'm just going to assume that, so that's good, okay.
Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mary Lou?
Thank you, Bob.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
John Wong?
Aye.
I'm an aye. All right, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Carl, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mike, see you tomorrow.